Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Please join us in the flag salute.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, oral call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
All right, adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, I had a request, right?
Yeah, I did want to request that we move up new business, item A, to after the consent calendar so that we can devote the rest of the meeting to the Baylands General Plan Amendment.
Okay, is anybody okay with that? So, Cliff, is that in?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. So, yeah, I'll move forward with that.
Yes, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an operating agenda. So, the attorney, you want to report out from closed session, please?
Sure. Council had three items on the closed session tonight. One was a claim of Andrew Herman, and the council voted unanimously to reject that claim. The other was a discussion about real property negotiations concerning a portion of Fifty Park Place, and the council gave direction with respect to that matter. And the other one was potential litigation. Council discussed but gave no, took no action on that matter.
Okay, very good. Thank you to the attorney. So, we have oral communications, number one, for any item that is not on the agenda. I have a number of slips, and it looks like most of them are contained to items on the agenda, prem law? Were your premises for the item on the agenda? Okay, all right. So, does anybody wish to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any takers. We have a presentation, introduction of new police sergeant Cecilia Garay. And if I mispronounce your name, please correct me, okay?
That was perfect.
Okay.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to introduce to you our newest member of our police department family, Sergeant Cecilia Garay. Cecilia was born in San Francisco and raised in Daly City. She graduated from Jefferson High School and then joined the United States Army Reserves, where she served for six years. Cecilia graduated from Notre Dame University magna cum laude with a bachelor's of science degree in human services and a double minor in public administration and counseling. After her service in the military, Cecilia began her law enforcement journey with the Broadmoor Police Department as a police cadet, explorer, and then reserve officer. She later accepted a job as a police officer for the Colma Police Department, taking on responsibilities of field training officer, detective, acting sergeant, community service coordinator, and a public information officer. During her tenure with the Colma Police Department, she received the Lions Club Award for her commitment to community outreach. In 2012, she joined the Daly City Police Department as a patrol officer, field training officer, acting sergeant, and served two terms as a detective and was a member of the hostage negotiations team with the Daly City SWAT team. Cecilia comes to the Brisbane Police Department as a sergeant with over 20 years of law enforcement experience. On her time off, she likes spending time with her family and her multi-poo named Sadi. We welcome Cecilia to our Brisbane family.
Would you like to have a rebuttal to what the chief said? Please come up to the microphone, yeah.
I just want to say thank you to the city of Brisbane for having me here. I'm excited to meet all the residents and mingle with everybody throughout my journey in law enforcement, and I want to thank council for introducing me today as well. Thank you.
All right, welcome Cecilia. Fellow Jefferson grad. Okay, very good. So, that brings us to consent calendar. Does anybody wish to remove any items off the consent calendar?
I'd make a motion to, can I do the, since they're consent, I'd make a motion to approve item A, number one, two, three, and four? Or do I have to say the resolutions?
Yeah, item B.
Oh, and item B, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? You want to comment on it, city attorney? You're good, okay. Have motion, a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, that brings us to new business, which is item A, consider replacement of raccoon statue in Costanos Canyon. You guys laughed, that was, you know, I mean, for people really been around, that was something that Byron Jensen had donated a number of years ago, and he had an artist, Sparrow, I can't pronounce his last name, if anybody wants to try, but anyway, built this beautiful statue, and it was made out of bronze, and of course, you know, when metal was really high, somebody decided to tie it to the bumper of their car and absconded with it, you know, so they lost a beautiful art piece. So, we're looking at replacement, and we have contacted actually his widow, who still has the cast for it. So, staff report, please, on that.
I think you did a fine job, mayor. Not much more I can add to that. It was a statue that was much beloved by the community, and it's been here for a very long period of time. The statue was removed within the last 10 years. A council member asked to see if we can ref, you know, find if we can get it redone, and when I looked it up, I noticed that Sparrow had passed away, so I was very concerned about that, and made a phone call to his widow. His widow is fortunately still alive, and she told, you know, we talked a number of times, and the cost for redoing the statue and the base, because we need to redo the base and the installation and the plaque, would be $10,850. Of course, one of the concerns is what happens if it gets taken away again, and we don't have the ability to replace it. So, I asked what would be the cost of having an extra mold, so that way we could go out and get it recast, you know, redone if we needed, and the cost for the next extra mold would be $500. So, the overall cost for replacing that much beloved statue would be $11,350, which would include the statue, the installation of it, the plaque for it, plus another mold.
Okay, thank you. Council comments?
I have a question. Is it possible that the bronze statue would qualify for being used as public arts funds?
Yes, I mean, you know, it's up to the city council's decision as to what they want to use the public art money for. That would be considered a piece of public art. I think, you know, when that was discussed originally, there might be a question of whether or not, if you do want to use it through the public art funds, if you want to take it through the public art community, or if the city council just wants to make that decision on their own.
For me, I think that, I mean, I'm in favor of getting the piece of art and reinstalling it in the canyon, and I would also be in favor of the getting the replacement mold just in case, and would want to authorize it either way, and if the public art committee feels they would want to run it through their system, that's fine. We could figure out where the money came from at that point, which fund.
Okay, any comments?
I was gonna ask that question, but she got it.
Yeah, you know, I got a, just a little story here. So, the widow, I believe she's in her 80s perhaps, so, you know, when staff had contacted her, yeah, she was all in favor of doing it, and then, then she kind of went off the map, you know, she wasn't around, and there was concern that maybe she had passed away, and then we were gonna lose this opportunity to be able to get the statue back, but it turned out she was just overseas on a long trip, and she came back, and yeah, thank goodness, it all worked out in the end. Thank you to staff for staying on that, and I know that Chief Macias even went over to her house, because I saw the little card, because I went over there too. So, thank you for putting in that extra effort.
All right.
I didn't realize she lived in Brisbane.
She doesn't.
That's great.
No, she lives, she lives on the peninsula though.
Oh, okay.
I think it was San Bruno is where she lives.
I would just like to make sure we dig a big, deep hole with a big pole in it, so it can't be dragged off again. We're gonna spend money on it, but I would be okay putting it through the Art Commission too, I mean, if that's the, what everyone wants to do, I mean, I don't really care.
I could make a comment on that, because I think Public Arts Committee, you know, I think they're a little bit reluctant to want to utilize those funds, and I respect that. I think that we do have some from a city council fund that we use on special projects to be able to pay for that out of the general fund, and, you know, I'd prefer to go that route instead of utilizing funds out of those special art fund projects that are kind of being targeted for more, larger things, so.
Well, and then we could get moving on it right away versus it going through the whole public art subcommittee process, especially if we're concerned that she, she might not be here too much longer, then we might want to expedite that.
No, no, I.
I'm sure she's quite healthy.
Okay, I don't know.
She seems very healthy when I talk to her.
I think it's great that we move forward. I don't understand why it wouldn't be considered public art, but that's certainly fine with me either way.
Yeah, taking it out of the council fund, I think is most appropriate.
Okay. I'd make a motion. Oh, we got it.
Members of the public, Anya, you got your hand up? Come forward.
Anya Miller, I'm a contemporary of Mrs. Anargus, and was very much involved in the original artwork, and it was a totally volunteer citizen funded project. It cost $5,000 in those days, and people raised the money, contributed, and we then dealt with the artist directly commissioned that work for us, and Byron was involved, of course, but it's the people who wanted to honor her that did the fundraising. So, I'm very glad to hear that you're doing it, replacing that lost public art, and it was the first public art, and, you know, not new public art that needs to be considered, it's replacing what was stolen. So, thank you very much.
Jill?
Could we consider maybe casting a couple of them, say, out of like aluminum or something less stealable?
Got everybody in on this.
We got a lot of outer work raccoons in town. I think we could hire for this job. We could put a schedule out, and they could just stand up there for a while. But the main thing, and I heard someone mention it, is that we really want to make this, I heard that the last one was actually a little loose on that thing at the end when it did get taken from people up there, so making sure that it is secure, because $10,000 and then it gets taken, is gonna be a big hit for us. So, I'm sure you guys are gonna make sure of that, but hiring the raccoons is not a bad idea.
Thanks, Dan. This is Dan Carter, for the record. Ray? And Bill Detmer before that. You guys have been around here a long time, forget to say your name.
I'm really happy you're doing this. I was mayor when the statue was dedicated.
Ray Miller.
And, right, thank you. Forgot my name for a moment here. But what I wanted to mention was that the statue is actually dedicated to the children of Brisbane. And when it was dedicated, you know, they had a big cover over it, and the whole first grade class was there, and so they had a countdown, you know, 10, 9, 8, and then they pulled off the cover, and all the kids cheered, and so it was quite, quite an event when it was first inaugurated as a form of public art and a recognition of Byron Jensen's contributions to the community, but also the children of Brisbane.
Hey, Ray, what year was that?
It must have been about 1987?
Eighty-four?
No, I don't think so. Yeah, no, well. I wasn't mayor in 84, I just got elected.
Maybe we could do a dedication again?
Ray, she who I must obey. Michelle.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, and I'm really glad you are replacing the raccoon, but I also really want to thank you and the people of Brisbane who have worked so hard to restore the canyon and get the ivy out of the canyon, and the city, you know, hiring professionals to take the ivy out of the upper part of the canyon, because as sweet as that little raccoon will be, cast in bronze, not running around bothering my cats, the preservation of the canyon itself is really valuable, invaluable, more than I can say. And to that, our next Habitat Restoration Day is we're moving on to another canyon. We've done Firth, we've done Costanos, they'll require maintenance, but we're gonna do Upper Sierra Point Road Canyon in July, so I hope everybody comes out and helps us pull the ivy off the trees there as well. So, thank you so much for your support for the Habitat as well as the raccoon.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter, the new business?
I do.
You do?
I do. I just.
You had your chance, no.
No, no, thanks. The dedication from the kids again would be really kind of fun.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, that would be great.
Thanks.
I'll work with the school district. I'll work with the school district on that, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Okay.
And just to let you know, it's gonna take about six to nine months before we'd actually get the raccoon.
Okay, so we're looking at next year?
Yes.
Yeah, at least. No other takers?
That's government for you, right?
No, it's the private thing, it's gonna take that long to do.
All right, Madison, you starting to make a motion?
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to replace the raccoon statue in Costanos Canyon, also known as Raccoon Canyon.
And, and the cast?
Oh, yes, and the second cast, traditional five, what is it, $500?
$500, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion, a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close? Okay, got a new raccoon. All right, so that brings us to public hearing, which is Brisbane Baylands General Plan Amendment, GP 1-18, and the purpose of this public hearing is for members of the public to comment on a proposed general plan amendment for the Baylands that would allow for a range of 1,800 to 2,200 residential units and 4 million square feet of new commercial. So, we welcome the public, and thank you for coming to the meeting, and then, at our meeting on Baylands on March 22nd, the council directed staff to develop draft general plan amendment language for us, for the public to consider before placing it on the November ballot as a citywide vote. After hearing from the public that night, we directed that the draft amendment allow for 1,800 to 2,200 housing units and up to 4 million square feet of commercial space, and that, too, that the amendment include language authorizing the city to enforce environmental cleanup and ongoing protections, as well as protect the city from fiscal harm during and after any development. We've released staff's draft of the proposed amendment for review tonight. The city council will not be making any decisions on final language tonight. We want staff to review the elements of the proposed language and then hear input from the public to help the city finalize the language and bring it to the council for vote, put on the November ballot. Before we begin, I want to confirm to the residents of Brisbane that the city council remains united in its commitment to make sure that what we put in front of the voters in November will require the developer, two, one, fully clean up the Baylands to the highest legal standard, two, close and cap the landfill to the highest legal standard, three, agree to enforceable standards to ensure the land is properly remediated and the landfill closed in compliance with the law, and four, agree to terms that protect the city financially during and after any development. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager for a comment, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo your comments, over many months now, the city council and staff have been working the Senate proposal to the voters this November that meets demands of regional housing issues, acknowledges the unique aspects of the Bayland site, the historical soils contamination, preservation of rail history, et cetera, be financially responsible to the city, and maintains local control. We have presented a draft to you tonight, and I'm gonna have Lloyd Zola, who has been our environmental consultant for a few years on this project, to walk you through the general plan amendment language, and from there, I think you would probably take public input.
Okay.
Hello, thank you.
I like that tie.
I love this tie, and everybody on TV is gonna be able to see it. The general plan amendment that is in front of the community now, in front of you for consideration, is just that, it's an amendment to the existing general plan, and what this does, or would do if approved both by council ultimately by the voters, is it would set essentially the rules by which a specific plan for the site would be considered. So, even though this process started with general plan and specific plan, only the general plan amendment, the city's policies for development of the Baylands are now in front of the city council as part of this amendment. We are proposing that the Baylands subarea be extended to include the, what is now the northwest bay shore area, or northeast bay shore, and that the Beatty subarea be expanded, essentially to take the northeast quadrant of what's known as the Baylands, and that area would include both recology lands, lands adjacent to recology, that would provide for one of two things, either for an ultimate recology expansion or for development of the site according to the standards of the Beatty subarea. If that area is not owned by recology, that could ultimately be part of a specific plan for the entirety of the Baylands. The reason we are proposing the Bayland subarea cover all of that area and not the Beatty area is so that there would be one specific plan for the entirety of the Baylands. There would be one set of general plan policies related to the Baylands, and that way we wouldn't have pieces of policy scattered around. So, that is the reason, I know there's been some discussion about maybe we should keep the northeast bay shore, but that is the reason that in front of you is a single designation. As the mayor had said, that would permit up to 1,800 to 2,200 dwelling units, along with an ultimate configuration that's in front of the council and community today, is 4.5 million square feet of commercial office space to be distributed on both sides of the rail line, as well as up to 500,000 square feet of hotel use. The reason for that configuration is it provides, one, a better balance of housing and commercial in terms of site usage, but also provides more of a cushion for fiscal impacts, because one of the policies included is that development of the Baylands be fiscally positive to the city. In other words, that it would generate more revenue than it would cost to the community and the people of Brisbane. There are a couple things that would occur and need to occur before approval of a specific plan, and the general plan amendment calls for the specific plan shall include, and that shall include remedial action plans for OU1 and OU2 approved by the regulatory agencies, as well as a Title 27 closure plan approved by the regulatory agencies, along with the schedule for the physical remediation of OU1 and 2, and the actual Title 27 closure of the landfill, along with specific means that the city would have to enforce adherence to that schedule. So, in other words, when a specific plan comes back to you for consideration, you will have already been through as a community the process of looking at and reviewing the remedial action plans, Title 27 closure, and you will have as part of that specific plan a schedule for those activities to actually occur prior to any development of the site. The other action that must occur prior to approval of the specific plan or concurrent with approval of the specific plan is identification of a reliable firm water supply for the project site. Now, we went through earlier in the public hearings, a lot of discussion regarding the OID term sheet, the term sheet with the Oakdale Irrigation District, that we have identified as a reasonably likely supply that would be good for, to support a general plan amendment, which is what is in front of you, and, but contracts would need to be signed or agreements in place, and more engineering and design of a water supply system before you actually would consider a specific plan. The general plan amendment also calls for any residential development, those 1,800 to 2,200 units to be in the northwest portion of the site, and we've defined it as the extension of the existing Geneva right-of-way, because the ultimate Geneva extension is yet to be designed. But the other important part of that residential area is that the residential area to be remediated to accommodate ground level housing and to support and support uses, so that you would have the ability to have, along with these 1,800 to 2,200 units, daycare there, that you could have ground level parks, you could have schools, playgrounds, medical facilities, and there would not be restrictions on the kinds of uses that would support those residential areas, the residential use within the residential portion of the site. I mentioned the revenue positive, and revenue positive is defined in a couple different ways. I had previously mentioned revenues exceeding expenses, but the other part of that is all the physical infrastructure, the improvements of water, sewer, drainage system, roadways, and all of those things that are. and all of those things that are required to make the development work would be done at the expense of the developer. So those two together are the traditional development shall pay for itself, both in terms of the infrastructure, as well as ongoing maintenance of the site. There are also, as part of this policy, a requirement for essentially assurances for the ongoing performance of the site, in terms of monitoring of the performance of remediation, or monitoring of the performance of, as it's ultimately decided what you feel needs to be monitored over time, along with assurances such as performance bonds, environmental assurance, as you would ultimately determine appropriate. The community went through development of a sustainability framework, and the general plan amendment requires that that specific plan incorporate the tenants of that program, of that sustainability framework, and its principles be incorporated into the specific plan. So when you review that specific plan, you will see those principles brought to life in terms of land use requirements. And there's also a specification in that policy that the site be energy neutral, that it produce more electricity than it's using over the course of a year, over the course of time. There is a requirement in the general plan amendment that key habitat areas be preserved, be enhanced, be protected, including Ice House Hill, the lagoon, and the lands adjacent to the lagoon, and all that would be part of a specific plan that would come back to you at such time as the developer brings it back. There are requirements to stabilize and restore the roundhouse, because simply restoring the roundhouse is not going to be adequate if it's allowed to stay in its current state, because it will continue to deteriorate. So we talk about in that, and it will be followed up with more specific mitigation measures, stabilizing the roundhouse, and then ultimately restoring it. The final piece of the general plan amendment that I'd like to point out is the requirement for flood protection. So the typical requirement for flood protection is the 100-year flood, but in this case, we also look at not just the 100-year flood, but 100-year flood considering 100 years of sea level rise, because as sea level rise occurs over the next 100 years, flooding regime will change, and so that is part of this amendment. That, real quickly, is the amendment that's in front of you, and as I said, this lays out the rules by which a specific plan would come back to you and be reviewed by community, planning commission, ultimately your city council.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you.
Before we open the public hearing, council clarifications, and Terry, I see your hand up.
I think you missed the last bullet point that's on the next page.
Okay. I did, sorry. The last part...
Important one.
Yeah. I was going through all the policies that said in one part, this is why you want all the policies in one place. But the second part of the general plan amendment is the, is Table 5 of the general plan would be revised, one, to eliminate the bayshore area, and then to identify the baylands as a mixed-use area. Included in that is the requirement, as mentioned before, the 1,800 to 2,200 units, 4.5 million square feet, but it also sets floor area ratios on the maximum development intensity of individual sites within the baylands. It sets standards that would correspond to that. But also, it adds a requirement that is not now in the general plan, it adds a requirement that a minimum of 25% of the land area within the baylands be set aside for open space, open area, and that would be defined as part of the specific plan also, and thank you for me by giving that.
That's not what I meant, actually.
Okay. The last bullet?
Yes, the last bullet point.
You said the last bullet. The last one is, obviously to make this work, the existing policy, Baylands 5, which is formerly Policy 331, would be deleted. That is the policy that now says prohibited housing on the bayland. That is, of course, a prerequisite to all the rest.
Lloyd, she meant the bullet point up.
The last bullet point.
The grading.
Okay, I've missed, now I've hit every bullet point that there is.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
No, you were clear, you said the last bullet point of that part. I just went straight to the table. And what this is, this requires that to move soil on the site, that any soil moved on the site as part of grading, as part of remediation, before it gets moved, would be tested in a manner approved by the city, so that it's not just dirt being moved off the landfill, off what's stored there, into fill for in OU1, OU2, it would all be tested before it's placed. And I am so sorry I missed that one, because...
That's okay.
That is a critical one.
Okay, any other clarification for council before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I just got a couple of quick...
Yeah, go ahead, Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, this might be a John question. So if housing is allowed only north of Geneva and west of the train track, so what's being proposed right now? I mean, it seems fairly dense, are we looking at somewhere between six to eight stories approximately?
There are a number of factors that will affect the prospective height, density, how much land is reserved for things like open space or roads, so, and unit size, those are all factors that kind of get into the bulk and the mass of the buildings, so it's hard to really define that, but generally that six to eight would not be uncommon for the kind of densities you'd be looking at if it's incorporated in the northwest quadrant. Those wouldn't be too different from what was approved in the Schlegge Development in San Francisco to the north.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, you know, if we were to allow some housing onto the other side of Geneva Avenue, Lloyd, and you talked about the...
In OU2?
In OU2, yeah. Well, you know, part of OU2 is north of Geneva, but basically, yeah, the other areas of OU2. You know, having those remediation standards for housing being in the highest standards, that footprint of clinging to the highest standards would, I'm assuming, would go all the way down to where the boundaries of where housing would be.
The way the amendment is written now, and this would be on the second, see, now I can figure out where the bullets are, the second bullet on the second page, refers to any proposed residential development shall, and so any area in the specific plan that was shown, where residential would occur, would be remediated to that ground-floor standard.
Okay, and then, so the Schlegel Lock site, so that particular site will have housing, but the remediation, is that an industrial standard, not a housing standard? Could you clarify?
Not speaking to that particular project, but where you have podium-style housing that is not ground-level, and you remove the typical contact with the formerly contaminated soil, where it's up above the ground level, you would have a standard that is, would allow residential use, but it would also be the same standard of 1 in 100,000 that would be used for industrial and commercial uses, as opposed to in a single-family development where there's clearly is a ground-level contact, like in your backyard, your front yard, it would be to a 1 in 1 million standard, and what the policy now suggests is the standard be written so that it would accommodate ground-level housing that would accommodate ground contact by residents, so essentially the 1 in 1 million standard.
Okay, so just for my own clarification, so if someone says, we're going to remediate the site to the housing standard, that means that it would be the housing, that means the remediation standard that would allow a school, or daycare, or...
Ground level?
Yeah, ground level.
I think there've been so many different ways, the terminology has been...
I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot here.
Good to ask the question. So, yeah, because you could talk about a residential standard, and residential standard could be taken to mean the 1 in 1 million. Because residential could be permitted if it raised on podium, not ground contact, you could have residential use at the 1 in 100,000 standard, and I've heard people, you know, heard the argument that that is a residential standard. So this is the reason, the policy as it exists right now says accommodate ground-level residential use.
To really give that...
What a residential standard is.
Clarity, okay. Let's see.
The other part of that, before you go on, is the residential support uses, where sometimes you do a, the podium-style housing, there may be institutional controls or institutional regulations that would say, yes, you can have the housing in that configuration, however, daycare, medical facility, or other uses would be prohibited. And what we said, the policy says that the site, the residential areas would be remediated to a standard that would allow for daycare with no institutional controls prohibiting those support uses.
Okay, great. And then I have a question for our city attorney. So, Michael, you know, there's been a lot of chatter in the community about SB 35, and so, and I know we have it posted on our website, but sometimes it's, you know, it's good just to provide an explanation at the council meeting. So if we move forward with the general plan amendment to allow the 1,800 to 2,200 housing units, could we be subjected to future housing units based on SB 35 requirements?
Mayor and council, of course, this question has been out there in the community for some time. Our office has looked at it, the environmental land use attorneys that the city has retained has looked at this issue, as has the law firm that is involved in the lobbying efforts on behalf of the city have looked at this issue as well, their land use attorneys. And collectively, we, I think we all agree that the baylands would not be affected by the provisions of SB 35 for a number of different reasons. One of them, of course, being the fact that the, only a small portion of the baylands would be designated for residential uses, and only if a specific plan is approved, as Lloyd has indicated. The remainder would not allow residential uses under the general plan or under the current applicable zoning, so SB 35 would not come into play there. Secondly, the general plan and zoning require the adoption of a specific plan prior to any construction on the baylands, and without a specific plan in place, there is no objective zoning or design standards which SB 35 requires, and so therefore SB 35 is also not applicable there. And certainly, there is no specific plan currently filed or in play to develop the baylands. And then, thirdly, the site OU1 and OU2 have been identified by the Department of Toxic Substances Control as hazardous waste sites. SB 35 is inapplicable to hazardous waste sites unless cleared for residential use by DTSC. So that, obviously, that agency has not cleared the land for residential use, so SB 35 is also not applicable for that reason as well. There are probably other reasons we could go into, but I wanted to give the council and the community certainly the overview of why SB 35 would not be applicable.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Can they comment on that? Okay, just, okay.
Okay, then just the last question is, you know, if the, I guess this is also a legal question, Michael, so if the general plan amendment passes in November, if we were to do future changes to the general plan amendment, we would have to have another election?
Correct. If the voters approve a general plan amendment with respect to those provisions that the voters approve, if there was going to be an amendment to those provisions, it would have to go back and be approved by the voters.
Okay, any changes, even a minor change?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question, we can go back in order after, but I just had a follow-up question to your SB 35 statement, and just to further clarify, you know, eventually the land will get remediated, will get cleaned up, but just to confirm, SB 35 will still not impact the baylands because a development agreement is, will already be in place theoretically? So technically SB 35 impacts areas in which the development agreement has not come to fruition yet?
I think the goal is that if the general plan is approved by the council and the voters, that there would then be a specific plan and a development agreement negotiated between the property owner and the city, and if that development agreement were in place, then neither SB 35 nor any other law would be able to supersede, as it were, the contractual agreements between the property owner and the city.
Right, okay. And theoretically, if the voters, if the voters, you know, do not move forward with something, that could open us up to the potential for those things to kick in later on down the line?
It's certainly, certainly a possibility of state legislation that could impact the development of the baylands if there's not, if there's not something in place that is acceptable to the legislature.
But that would not be state SB 35.
Correct.
It would need to be some other kind of legislative action that would trigger that.
That's correct. There are a number of housing bills, of course, that are floating out there, and that's not to say that in the next session, in 2019, there could be something else that would come down the pike and could make the city susceptible to that legislation.
I was also on the SB 35 kick. I was under the impression that because we are not a city at risk for our, we're in compliance with our RENA numbers, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, that also helps to take this area off the table because we have met our regional housing needs. Is that correct?
Met our above-market requirements, we have not met our below-market rate requirements, so we are subject to SB 35 as a jurisdiction, but any SB 35 eligible project would have to be 50% affordable.
And isn't it only guaranteed up to the amount that we're deficient? So it's not like they could then, you know, if we're deficient, 100 units, they couldn't then decide to build 1,000, it would have to be whatever the deficiency is, correct?
That's my recollection, but I'd have to verify that.
Thank you.
Madison, you have any more?
Um, I'll go last.
Lloyd, if you wouldn't mind, just clarifying for the public, 1 in 100,000 versus 1 in 1 million square foot cleanup, just for people who are not familiar with that.
Yeah, the cleanup standards are measured actually in excess cancer deaths per population, and the assumptions that go into that are on a residential standard that, or even on a commercial industrial standard, constant contact with the ground, with the contaminated soil, so regardless of any remediation that occurs, if somebody somehow could ingest the contaminated dirt, touch the contaminated dirt, breathe the contaminated dirt for however many number of years, then they measure cancer deaths based on that kind of exposure that really could never occur, so it's that conservative a standard.
Thanks.
Is that it?
That's it.
Madison?
I'm wondering if it's possible, just to kind of aid the conversation, if staff can come back to us with a little bit more clarity on 1,800 to 2,200 units on OU1, kind of what that would look in terms of density? I know there are some factors, but play, like maybe play around assuming certain factors, assuming, you know, one parking space per unit, assuming an average of, you know, this square footage, this combination of maybe townhomes and apartments, that sort of thing. So we kind of get an idea more accurately about what it's going to look like in terms of stories, and if, how much room we kind of have to play around with open space. I know that's something that really comes down to a specific plan, but I think for the purpose of determining exactly what we're doing here, it's important to try and look, you know, that far down the line, and I think it's helpful for the community as well, and similar to what we were doing for Parkside, just so that we could all envision. And then I'd also like to see a potential of, like, if we decided to, and, you know, this may fit in OU1, but I doubt it, but if we decided to reduce the density so that it would be in the range of three to five stories, like how much land, assuming those same predictions or those same, you know, controls, how much land would that cover if that spilled into OU2? So that we can understand exactly kind of what a development might look like, just in a really rough sense, to help in this discussion, is that possible for next, our next meeting? Is that possible for next, our next meeting? I know that's asking a lot, I'm sorry.
No, well, no, I think it's a very pertinent question. I, so, I mean, we'll make, we'll have to make some assumptions.
Sure.
And we'll make that clear, what those assumptions are. But I think we can come back and give you something that might help guide the conversation.
Right, and when we did, like, when we, when we hired the consultant to do the economic analysis, they made assumptions about, you know, it being 90% renters, 10% ownership. And those things, even though they're assumptions, they kind of aided us in saying, oh, this is very conservative, you know, it just, it just helped us look at it with a certain lens. So I think even with the controls there, as long as we know what those are, it allows us to view whatever that proposed, or that, that prediction is with a certain lens that can kind of help make this conversation a little bit easier between us and I think with the community as well, so we know exactly kind of what we're getting into. That's my only question right now.
Okay. Any further council clarifications?
If more questions?
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. I have nine slips. Okay, and we've got probably 60, 70 people in here. You wish to address the council on this subject? The slips are outside the door there, and you can give them to the city clerk, and she'll bring them up to me. So if you wish to speak on this, please fill out a slip. It helps, helps us manage it a little bit better. Okay, the first slip I have up, and I take them in order received, is former mayor Clara Johnson, member of BB CAG.
Good evening. While I appreciate the thought and the effort that has created this general plan amendment, I disagree with the inclusion of residential use on the baylands. I'm speaking as an individual and a member of the BB CAG. I remind you that the BB CAG recommended against residential use because of the risk to human health. If you insist on the inclusion of housing, then all we can do is try to make it as safe as possible. I would like to add my support to the following points made by former mayor Ray Miller in his comments to you, which you will receive soon, and I have included a copy so that my references will make sense to you. I have attached his comments.
We have a copy.
And to make, pardon me?
We have a copy.
Oh, good. Well, on page one, I agreed with adding the land use designation of PDMURES. Page two, items EFG. Page three, items HIJKL. I bring you the comments of another BB CAG member, May Swanbeck. She states that the wording of the fifth bullet on the backside of the general amendment text should be changed so that the intent is clear. It should begin with requirements and responsibilities instead of sufficient assurances. Her exact wording is attached, and I agree with her request. I noticed that the rail line does not appear on the diagram of the land use diagram for the city of Brisbane, and you make reference to that rail line in the general amendment text. I suggest that the rail line should be on the diagram. On attachment one, under item two on the front side of the GPA text, I understood the city council agreed to 4 million square feet of commercial space instead of 4.5 million plus 500,000 square feet of hotel space. I think it is prudent to limit the commercial space to 4 million square feet. Under the only bullet point on the front side, an item D should be added to the list of what specific plan shall include. My item D, a 50-year bond to cover landfill leakage to avoid city responsibility for the impact of landfill leaks in the future. On the backside of the general plan amendment, it isn't clear whether the items that have bullets on the side are intended to be part of the list of what shall be included in the specific plan or what they are intended to be. They need to be designated in the same way as the first three with a letter in parentheses. On the front, they have letters. On the back, you have bullet points. So it's hard to figure out exactly what the intent is. Seems a legal document, and I, for that reason, I thought it should change. On attachment two, I would like to add the ballot, to add to the ballot question the following wording. In the, in the second line, after the word residences, doubling the current number of residences. That's just a clarification. Your ballot question tells how many units, and this would just inform the public that that doubles the number, current number of residences, six words. And in the fourth line, after the word capped, I hope that you might add residences prohibited for the landfill. I appreciate your giving my comments your consideration. There's one.
Clara, do you have like an underlying version that you could, of your comments?
I'm going to have, I'm going to give everything.
Yeah, okay.
I hope that they're clear. The, one thing I kind of wanted to say without, that is not included in these comments, is that I have a little bit of a concern. I'm really happy to see how the city's working with the DTSC. But DTSC has told me about situations where cities began to drive a development that was on contaminated land, and they were driving in a way in which DTSC had no way to stop them. And they were adding residences in places that DTSC didn't, couldn't stop them. They could advise them, but they couldn't stop them. And I would hope that it should be DTSC's judgment about issues of the contamination and the remediation that would drive what was going to be done, rather than you're putting things in here, you're talking about what the city wants to do, I think, you know, under certain conditions. But you don't, I would hope, I would, and I believe that every resident of this town would hope, that you don't end up trying to push DTSC so that you can have what you planned. You know, I could give examples, but it would be, like if you wanted to go to certain parts of OU 2, which the nature and the extent of the contamination isn't even known, and you want to put housing there, you know, if they can't meet what you want, you want no institutional controls, there's a reason for institutional controls. It's their determination that this is not safe without them. And that shouldn't be made to look innocent because it isn't. And it's sort of, sort of like, just, I ask you to be careful that you are listening to them because they have the expertise to tell you what would be best. And I know, I can tell from your dialogue, you're all very concerned about the safety issue, and I admire you for that, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I can go through, but I have written down on all your text items, and I think it would be better for everyone if I just waited and let you look at them at your leisure.
Yeah, if you have, give a copy of city clerk.
I will.
Thank you, Clara. Next, next person up is Nancy Loxamana. And if I butcher your name, please, I know I've got yours right, but anybody, if I butcher your name, please straighten it out for the record, so.
Nancy Loxamana, resident of Brisbane. I've always been a proponent of housing in the baylands. I've always been a supporter of that, full remediation, open space, and green. I am not in any way supportive of having all of the housing in one zone. To me, that looks like taking the South San Francisco Cove and moving it up there and saying it's Brisbane. It's not Brisbane. We're not including people into our town. This is not a full vision of the baylands. A full vision of the baylands is to include and connect that neighborhood, and it will be a neighborhood, to us. Second thing I really am very strong about is by not including housing in OU 2, you're not, as the lawyer said, really in the driver's seat of being, taking advantage of having remediation to the, any proposed residential shall be up to the full standard of remediation. You're leaving us wide open to have something we don't want, which is not a remediated area. Having housing in OU 2 will give us that full vision to include the roundhouse, to have a school. Lawyer did say there would be a school up in the residential area. I don't know where that would be, on the roof? I mean, it will not be a very desirable area in my vision of what Brisbane should be. Having more community connections with the roundhouse, with the Horse Hill, with maybe a community of business and residential will make that area just as desirable, if not more desirable, than what will probably be called Schleglock. That's not Brisbane at all. Somebody suggested that the crossover to Geneva would be dangerous and people wouldn't want to cross over. I mean, the state of California is already making crossovers for mountain lions and wildlife. I mean, we can certainly get people to and from. I've been a strong proponent of transportation, the wheel of transportation connecting everywhere. Having housing in OU 2 will help do that. I also want to encourage you in the amendment to include some wording that if high-speed rail does go in, and with the rezoning, the property becomes more valuable, we should be getting a profit of that. Okay? We're the ones who are recommending it for zoning. So please include something in the amendment to take advantage of that, if it's, if it does go to that extreme. I really hope you do get more feedback from the community. And I also feel that the commercial, which for the most part should be on the east side, there should be a range up to, not a maximum set. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Our next one I have up is Kima Hayek.
Hi, Kima Hayek, resident of Brisbane. Thank you for giving us time to talk on this important topic. I'd like to echo a lot of what Nancy said. I'm, you know, first of all, any housing that would happen in the, in the baylands, no matter where it is, has to be, in my mind, remediated to the, to the million, one in a million level. And, you know, to consider any lower standard or pedestal housing or any of that is really selling us short. But I, I don't like the idea of sticking everybody in the far corner of the baylands. And I know the rest of it is a lot more contaminated than that corner, but having everybody up there just makes, i- it disconnects the town. And I believe that we should have a connected, a connected town. I'd also really not like to be in a position where we double the size of the town and we have new voters in, and all of a sudden, the laws or the zoning has changed, and we have a situation where housing is built on the east side of the tracks. I'm really concerned that we don't figure it all out. I, I think this has gone on for a long time. I've, I've only lived in town for seven years, and I know a lot of people have been here for a lot longer, have been, you know, fighting on this issue for a lot longer with a lot more intensity. I, I think, I think it would be great if we could figure the whole thing out and make sure that we don't have a chance of any housing ever being built on unremediated land. That's really my concern, is that we open the door and, and before we know it, with the best intentions, we're allowing things to spin out of our control, either because the state takes control, or because the developer is able to use pre-existing, you know, like, oh, you let us build eight-story housing over there, well, why don't you let us build it over here? And it just creates a situation where we wind up not being able to control it. I think that Brisbane should remain in the driver's seat, and we should build according to how our values are, of having the town be connected, having the community be connected, and having everybody be together. So I just, I don't like the idea of having everybody in one little corner of the, of the baylands. It just seems like we're putting those people next to San Francisco, and they're going to vote like they live in San Francisco, not like they live in Brisbane. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kima. Luke Bichard.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, it's a pleasure and a privilege to address you tonight. I believe this is our time. We have the ball, and it's up to Brisbane to state as clearly as possible what Brisbane sees itself becoming as it expands into the baylands. We cannot play defensively. The only way to retain control over the baylands is to assert this control now by creating a clear vision of what Brisbane will become. If we don't do that, no one will do it on our behalf. The proposal as it stands today does not, to me, look like Brisbane at all. On density, on the height of the buildings, on the fact that it places all new housing stock far, far away from Brisbane Village, on the fact that it will create an enclave that will de facto be more attached to and feel more like San Francisco than Brisbane. In my opinion, we should go on the offensive and be bold enough to propose what we really want as a community. Now, I know full well that there are multiple differing opinions on what that is exactly. I also realize it is much easier to be against something than it is to rally a majority of our citizens around the proposal. But there are a few points that seem important to all of us. The highest level of ground-level contamination remediation. A scale for the buildings that makes it feel like Brisbane. And a distance between existing Brisbane residents and our new neighbors-to-be that lets us connect as residents and neighbors, lets businesses and their patrons connect, and kids connect with their baseball and soccer fields, and if I can put that plug in, being the sole Canadian perhaps here today, a hockey rink, right? We need that. Why are people laughing? Now, you are leading us. You asked for it, and you got it. People voted you in. You are our leaders. Leadership in this case could be defined as creating the vision and motivating, motivating us all to rally behind that same vision. A vision that should, in my opinion, consider two main points. Allowing mixed-use residential on both OU 1 and OU 2, so as to spread the housing stock, thus making it, its density lower, and allowing for more amenities and open spaces to be included in the mix, accessible directly to its inhabitants and to the residents of existing parts of Brisbane. And two, to use the same residential stock-to-commercial ratio that we currently have in old Brisbane as a starting point. This seems to be fiscally prudent, so I'm not an expert on the quantity of housing we have in ratio or in relationship to the quantity of commercial space that we have. But whatever that ratio is, let's say roughly 1,800 housing units to, what is it, 5, 6 million, 7 million is it, currently existing as commercial space? I'm sure somebody has the figure here. Whatever that is, to use that as a starting point to project onto the baylands what it should be, not affecting the overall balance that we enjoy today, that seems like a good logical starting point. Last, I would like to leave you with two questions that I would like for you to address, which is, as I look at the proposal, and knowing a little bit, you know, you know, being friends with all of you and knowing the various city council members to varying degrees, it doesn't look like anything that any single one of you would say, that's what I want. That's what I really, really want for Brisbane. I'm baffled by that. I don't get it. So clearly, I don't understand who came up with it and for what reason. So I am asking, what was the intent behind this particular layout that we have before us? And, and the main part is, why is it a good idea, in your view, to concentrate all of the housing stock in the northernmost, mostly what used to look like OU 1, plus, you know, the, the southern extension, extension to the Geneva roadway? I'd like to get the background on why that is.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I ask him a question?
You're not asking me, you're asking the mayor, I guess.
Yeah.
It's fine with me, Mr. Mayor, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Luke. You mentioned that you would like to see a housing scale that feels like Brisbane. What, how many stories to you feels like Brisbane?
So the, the easy answer is not six to eight stories? And whatever the math works out to be. So if we are, because of other parts of the puzzle, committed to exploring 1,800 to 2,200 units of housing, if we divide that over a larger area, the density goes down. So as low as possible, given the constraints that we have, with the degrees of freedom that we have, or the demands placed on us. So three stories would feel acceptable to me. If we could get away with two, that'd be better, I guess. The lower, the better, in my view, but.
So similar to Parkside?
Say again, I'm sorry.
So similar to Parkside in terms of?
It, it could be, I, you know.
Density.
It's the density and the concentration that I'm trying to spread. I think if we spread down towards the western part, you know, west of the railroad tracks, going over OU 1 and OU 2, and take advantage of whatever area we can remediate safely, right? And, and, you know, we divide by a bigger number, the density will go down. It'll feel more like Brisbane.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you all.
Next one I have is Prem Law. Next one I have is Prem Lal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Prem Lal, Brisbane resident. I would like to make three points this evening. The first one deals with soil liquefaction. And as we, oh, we did get that up there. So as we can see, the OU one area, which is where the new development is proposed to be, is in an area, as is most of the Baylands, which is considered at a very high risk. If you can move that up just a little bit, and you can see the chart down at the bottom. So the red color is for a very high risk of soil liquefaction. And if, in fact, these developments are built in that vicinity, the question then becomes, how can that actually be revenue positive for Brisbane? Because if there's an earthquake and soil liquefaction occurs, and it will, how exactly is Brisbane going to pay for that? Is that going to be the developer who's going to come back and pay for that? Is that going to be a homeowners association that is going to pay for that? Or is it going to get dumped in the lap of the taxpayers of Brisbane? The second point deals with soil decontamination. And we've seen before with the Hunter's Point development that what was said to have been soil detoxification really never occurred at all. Or if it did, to a much lesser extent than it was promised to be. And so now you have people who are living in apartments, complexes, and so forth, on toxic land. So I kind of wonder whether the same type of thing would happen in the toxic part of the Baylands. And third, and finally, I would like to remind you of the Creble Plan for electricity generation from solar and wind power, which was approved by the Brisbane Planning Commission and which I believe would be a much better use of the Baylands. Thank you.
Next, Prem. Dan Carter.
Hello, Dan Carter, Brisbane resident, honorable mayor and council members. First of all, I appreciate, I know you guys have put so many hours into this and I can't believe your brains haven't exploded yet with all the information you've been going through. And I appreciate all that time because I know you're not doing it to get rich because this ain't going to do it. But we have seen over the years, the ridge had, has gotten built since I've lived here. And we've reached out to try to keep the ridge feeling included in our town. And sometimes they even feel disconnected and they're just not that far away. But there is the divide of the industrial park now. So for me, for this proposal that's been out there, to me, I also believe that housing just in one corner isn't going to look good. It isn't going to connect to Brisbane. So I would love to see it, for this proposal, to include OU one and OU two. And then there'll be, again, the lower height of the housing, probably a nicer-looking solution also. I mean, I think it would be better-looking housing instead of, like someone mentioned, the stuff in South City. It looks totally disconnected from South City. Also, with that land being in OU one and OU two, it protects that other one from then later on, someone saying, hey, you've got this big piece of land here that's still sitting here empty, and again, trying to push another group of housing on us. So the look would be good. It would look like a community. There'd be amenities that go with it. And with that, I also think there might be a resurgence of industrial. That area over there might be more viable for those people that own the property. They'll get a little more value out of that. And there could be some even better businesses in that area, which could kind of all maybe be, you know, upgraded within this scope of this. So I appreciate the tons of work you guys have done and this proposal. I know you guys are working hard and, you know, actually playing defense to start with. But I feel like you're getting on the offense now and I appreciate that. And no hockey fields.
I see, I see you guys are sitting next to each other, okay? That's why we got the police here. Next one I have, former mayor Anya Miller.
Mr. Mayor, council. I'd like to just echo what Prem just said about the renewable energy. Because, you know, I have worked for twelve years now with the Committee for Renewable Energy for the Baylands. And we have had success in a survey that was conducted. And most people, by far, the most people, when asked what should be in the Baylands, said renewable energy. And we, I hope that you will keep that principle that was adopted to have the energy production positive and use the, the east part of the Baylands, which doesn't have to be so heavily remediated under solar farms. If you use that and produce energy-positive production, that's a productive use of the land and will not cost the city anything, it will benefit. And we always thought that the citizen should benefit from that. And if you have energy-positive production, that will benefit us as well, as the, whatever goes there. Also, as far as the employment, you know, a solar farm does not require a lot of employment. So you're, you're removing that claim of jobs-housing imbalance if you have too much commercial. So that too, I hope that, you, you have been ordered to do housing, right? No matter what. But you have not been ordered not to have solar and wind. So please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya. Former mayor Ray Miller.
So, good evening, council members. I just gave hard copies of the work that I've been doing. I wanted to just explain that, you know, I'm a retired professor. And when I see a document, I, I want to go to work on it as a draft to sort of improve the language and the structure and the organization. Not loud enough? Okay. Pull it up? All right, okay. Don't want to be too imposing, you know? But anyway, I, I looked upon the draft general plan amendment as a draft. And therefore, I went to work on the language and decided that some of the language could be more precise and clear and that some of the bullet points could be put together in a more coherent way. Like, for instance, the remediation points are kind of scattered throughout. And so I combined them all together and then put them in the sequence of the way they would be done. So most of what I have done in my three and a half pages of comments, which I gave copies to the city clerk, and I think you've already seen online. And there's also copies for the, for the department heads.
We have your copy.
Yeah. So what I wanted to convey initially was that primarily what I'm doing is trying to just do a little wordsmithing of your parameters. You know, I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, change things in most of the language. It's trying to make it more clear and more precise and better organized. So that's my number one point. And so I hope it's helpful. However, there are some things that I would like to suggest. And is it possible, Ingrid, to see the proposed map? Could we have that up? Because a lot of people have been talking about that. And I think it's good to have it in front of us to know, you know, what we're talking about. Because I have some suggestions regarding that, which I think are consistent with your objectives. And you'll decide that, of course. But I'm making these suggestions for your consideration. They are in my document, but I wanted to highlight these. So the first comment I would like to make is that I really think that we should be very careful about using the MU designation because that now covers almost all of the Baylands, as you see on the map. MU is mixed-use and it's defined as including residential. And when you have something that is general planned as residential, that's a wide opening for the legislature to say, oh, well, you got this general plan as residential, we are now going to require you to do so-and-so. Senator Weiner is good at that and you can expect it to come in the future. So my suggestion is that, in agreement with most of the previous speakers, that the residential area be expanded, you know, probably brought down maybe double where it is now, so that the bottom of that area would be sort of approximately where Main Street hits Bayshore and then cut the line across there. And that would be into OU, beg pardon?
Could you say that again, I'm sorry?
Okay, so the idea would be that the, the planned development, mixed-use residential, the bottom line would come across from where Main hits Bayshore, which is kind of just also the top of where industrial cuts in. So it almost doubles the, the area and it certainly is into OU two. And that would respond to a lot of the things that people have said earlier. And then I would also strongly urge that you not make the rest of it MU because it's, it's just a wide opening to the legislature and you know they'll take it. I, I think it should stay trade-commercial. Because if you want to do the residential up there on the left, make it bigger, make it so it's less dense, as people have been saying, and then make the rest trade-commercial. I would even make the heavy commercial a little bit bigger too. I would bring that line down and make it straight across. Because eventually, I think, if Recology and UPC get to talk a little, it might make sense for Recology to move some of its facilities closer to the east, which would then free up some of the area along the eastern side of the caltering, which is now occupied by Recology. We talking about transit-oriented? You know, half of the station is occupied by Recology, which is not exactly, you know, transit-oriented housing. So if there would be some kind of deal whereby UPC and Recology could trade some land, sure would be nice. Would give us more of what we're trying to achieve. Another thing that I would suggest in reference to the map is to include actually on the map what's in the open space plan. We mentioned Ice House Hill, but we also mentioned the River Park. Those are both in the open space plan that's been approved by the council in 2001. That should be on there too. Because one of the things that's interesting about SB thirty-five is that what's important is what you already have in your general plan when the applicant comes in. You want everything that your city has its objectives clearly stated on, in your maps, in your general plan, in your policies, and eventually in your zoning. So everything is consistent. And so the suggestion I'm, I'm making, the suggestions I'm making are consistent with that. The other thing that I would suggest in terms of the conceptualization of the housing eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred, I think it would be a good idea to have eighteen hundred as the basic with the possibility of a twenty-five percent bonus for affordable housing. After all, the idea, and that's in the language of what you have already received from the staff, what you really want is to have space for more affordable housing. So why not set it up that way? So it's clear that that additional range is for affordable housing, not just more market-rate housing. Makes sense? Not that you agree, but I mean, it makes sense.
We're looking at the general plan.
Yeah. No, 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 no.
About our very specific things.
Yeah, no, this, this is just, this is exactly the same thing that's already in the general plan. It's just restating it, that's all. Because what the legislature's interested in is more affordable housing. It's clear. And we need to sort of do what we can to communicate to them and others that that's what we're trying to do. That's what we have in mind. So I have numerous other suggestions for rewriting and revisions and hopefully making it better and clearer. But that's all I'm writing. And I hope you will take the opportunity and the staff to study it and use what you can.
Can I ask?
Good luck. Thank you.
Wait, Ray, I have a question for you. Can I ask him a question? Okay. I just want to confirm because all of that was, was coming kind of fast and I was trying to take note of what you were saying. But just, just for clarity, so I make sure I understand you right. Are you suggesting that mixed-use essentially come down?
Right, mixed-use residential.
To cut, is this, I don't know.
That's correct. Well, you have it, yes, exactly.
Okay, so that's what you're suggesting, that the, the housing go until that point?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Just want to make sure I.
That would, that would give you more opportunity to have less density, less height. And then you could include parks and playgrounds and, you know, open areas and all the things that, you know, it's Brisbane.
So for, from a staff perspective, because I don't know exactly where Main meets up on here, is that beyond the roundhouse or is it right?
See, that's on there.
Okay. What is that?
It's after the roundhouse.
After the roundhouse, okay.
Right.
Okay.
So the roundhouse is below that area?
Actually, no.
Beyond the roundhouse.
Yeah.
Roundhouse is north of it.
Okay.
One, one other comment. Ray, and I appreciate the work you did in that you provided a red-line version because it, it makes it easier to conceptualize for us what you're trying to get across. One of the things that we do have that is constraining to us is in your draft, in the draft ballot question, is we are limited to seventy-four words.
Oh, okay.
So, so while we.
I was wondering about that. I knew there was a reason for the word count.
While we love, we would love to have more specifics in that ballot question, we just can't.
Okay, so what I was thinking of when I was trying to reconceptualize the language was what is it that people are going to care the most about that really should be in the ballot question?
We, we did too.
Yeah. That's kind of how I was thinking about it.
Yeah. Anyway, that's just a comment that, you know, while we love your suggestion.
Why, why seventy-four words?
People stop reading after that.
Something about that?
Well, it's actually seventy-five words.
I'm sorry.
It's a, it's a statutory, it's the election codes and that just limits it to seventy-five words, the.
We truncated it to seventy-four.
Okay. So anyway, just think about the key components that you want to communicate to people. Because you know very well that there are a lot of people, that's the only thing they'll read. So you really want to have your argument in there.
Yep. Thank you for doing that work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray. Thanks for, thanks for the passion. Bill Detmer.
After this speaker, may we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Good call.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm Bill Detmer, long-term resident of Brisbane.
Speaking of the mic, yeah.
I'm Bill Detmer, long-term resident of Brisbane. And are we having fun yet? This is really complicated and so I don't know much about any of this stuff. But it seems to me that the, that the proposed density may not be enough actually to give this whole thing life. And, and it, it could be as dead as the ridge on Friday night, you know? It just, that's a thought, okay? And what do those people want? The people that are going to be out there, that are going to live out there, what is going to be important to them? You know, and all I can think about is, is, is a good life. A good life that, you know, they have amenities, they have places to go, there's things to do, there's parking, they're near transportation. It could be a really, really nice thing. And I don't know what they want, but it would seem to me that we haven't really asked the question of what would make their lives better. So I don't know what the density should be, what the height should be. But, I mean, would somebody rather live on the fourth floor or the fourteenth floor? You know, I mean, there's killer views out there. It could be really nice. And when you get enough density, you can get on your elevator and, and be a short distance from things. The more spread out you are, the longer your walks, the, you know, it's, it's different. And, and it may, it's not going to be Brisbane. It's not going to be Brisbane like we know it. But what? But what is it that they need? What is it that they want? And what would make their lives better? And sort of a side thought is, way back when in 1909 or whenever they platted this whole place out, if they split it up into five or 10-acre parcels, we wouldn't be here. This would be like a little piece of Hillsborough. We would never be here. So just a thought that what's best for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be back shortly.